Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of January 7th, 2020. My name is Gary Hirsch. Pardon me, 2021, yeah, rolled over. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I am Gary Hirsch. I am the Chairperson of the Commission. The Planning Commission is a citizen body appointed by City Council. The Commission is empowered to make final decisions on certain matters with those being appealable to City Council. On other matters, the Commission acts in an advisory role to the Council with the Council making the final decision. You will have an opportunity to address the Commission during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Your testimony is very much appreciated and encouraged. The Commission does act from a written agenda. You will need to fill out a yellow speaker card and give it to City staff if you wish to speak on an item. Copies of the agenda and the speaker cards are located on the table just inside the main lobby door to the Civic Center. At this time, I'll ask you to silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. Thank you. There are seven members appointed to the Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask the Commissioners to introduce themselves and state the district which they are representing, starting on my far right.
Good evening. I'm Ed Nyberg, representing the Choya District.
Good evening. I'm Vern Crowe, representing Cactus.
Good evening. I'm Al Lennox, Vice Chair, representing the Burrell District.
My name's Rick Harper. I represent the Suororal District.
Warren Wilfong, the Ocatillo District.
And as I said, I am Gary Hirsch, a mayororal appointee representing the city at large, and I am a resident of the Cactus District. Let the record reflect that all Commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner Nowakowski, who is en route, are in attendance this evening, and we will introduce Commissioner Nowakowski upon his arrival for the record. The Planning Commission receives staff assistance and guidance from the Planning Division and the City Attorney's Office. Mr. Metta, would you please introduce City staff who are present this evening? The secret button.
Good button. That's better. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Members of the Planning Commission, to my extreme left is Diana Figueroa, who's the Recording Secretary. To my right, Mr. Jim Gruber, the Chief Deputy City Attorney. And right adjacent to me on my left is George Gailart, who's the Senior Planning Project Manager. I'm Jamshed Metta. I'm the newest staff member in the Development Services Group, and I will serve as your liaison for this meeting and probably a few more until we have a permanent replacement for the planning administrator position.
Thank you, Mr. Metta, and welcome back to Glendale after an extended sabbatical.
Yes, that's right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak on an item this evening that is not on tonight's agenda? Because these items are not on tonight's agenda, the Commission cannot take action this evening. However, items may be added to a future agenda. Anyone here this evening that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask Commissioner Nowakowski to introduce himself and his addition to the meeting for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Martine Nowakowski, I represent the residents of the Yucca District. Thank you.
The record could reflect that all Members of the Planning Commission are present at this time. Now we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of December 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the December 3rd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed and minutes are approved. Mr. Metta, are there any withdrawals or continuances this evening? Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to our public hearing items. The purpose of a public hearing is to provide interested parties an opportunity to present testimony for the Commission's consideration. We will follow the same procedure for each item. The Chair will call the application number and the name of the applicant. Staff will present their report and answer questions from the, excuse me, from the Commission. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation and answer questions from the Commission. Other persons who wish to testify will be asked to do so and answer questions from the Commission. The applicant will have an opportunity for closing comments. Staff will be asked for any final comments on the application and procedural guidance. The Chair will then close the public hearing and ask for a motion prior to discussion. You will need to state your name and address for the record if you wish to speak on an item. Please be brief, to the point, and avoid reputation, and the Chair does reserve the right to limit the length of your testimony. All exhibits shown to the Commission shall become part of the permanent record and must be submitted for the file. And let's see, this evening, we have one public hearing item. Palmeir Apartments Phase 2 GPA 20-09. Mr. Gailart is doing the City presentation. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, good evening. George Gailart, Glendale City Planning Staff. The cases before you this evening are GPA 2009 and ZON 20015, having to do with the Phase 2 portion of the Palmeir Apartments project. The request has two parts. Once again, there's a minor general plan amendment from GC or General Commercial to HDR 30, which is high-density residential, 30 units to the acre, and a rezon from C2 or General Commercial to R5 multifamily. The project site is located at the southeast corner of 45th Avenue and Palmeir Avenue, somewhat, just about two miles east of City Hall. And the site itself is located within a portion of the community, once again designated GC by the Glendale General Plan or General Commercial. It's located at the, kind of the northeast corner, that commercial corridor, once again, just east of 45th Avenue and south of Palmeir, that southeast corner. The zoning for the site currently, again, is C2. Everything to the north and east of the site is zoned multifamily, and south and west is basically commercial zones, C2 and C3. This is an aerial depiction of the site and the surrounding development. You can see, once again, it's located at the southeast block of Palmeir and 45th. Palmeir is that first street to the north of Glendale Avenue, again, right alongside of 45th Avenue. This is a little better look at the site. Currently, there is an RV storage facility located on the property. The site to the east is vacant at this time. The east portion of the property, the vacant site, I should say, is also part of a larger, this is two parcels. It's one project. This is a zone change for Phase 2. You may not have heard about Phase 1 yet. This did not require any kind of zoning action. That went through the process within the last year. We recently did a design review with that site. I believe there's about 53 units located on that east parcel. The plans for it have been approved through the design review process, and they're in for permits currently. The subject property includes the parcel to the west, again, that southeast corner of Palmeir and 45th. I believe this is a zoning change from C2 to R5 that would result in, I think it's Little picture of the ground level site. The area to the, to the left of the screen is the undeveloped portion of the Palmeir. That's the first unit of the project. And the enclosed area behind the block wall is the RV storage area that would be redeveloped as the second, second phase of this project. This is looking west along Palmeir to the intersection of 45th Street. What you see to the right of the screen is some existing townhome development. This is kind of a distorted view of the intersection there. Camera has narrowed the intersection to make it look kind of sharp, but it's actually a 90-degree angle. This is looking east. Palmeir is to the left of the screen, and 45th Avenue is to the right. You're looking toward the entry of the existing storage facility. This is a shot immediately across 45th Avenue to the west. What you're looking at here is a recently demolished site, I think in association with a school. There were some buildings there that were removed recently. It's now vacant as part of a redevelopment project. This is looking, this is the site immediately to the south. You can see the block wall along the south side of the storage facility. The applicant mailed an initial notice to adjacent property owners on October the 1st. Everybody within 300 feet of the site was notified. They also were invited to participate in a virtual neighborhood meeting, an online meeting, on October the 15th. There were no participants in that meeting. Tonight's hearing has been advertised. Notices were mailed out, and the site was posted on December the 17th. Excuse me, the notices were mailed on the 18th. In our review of the applicant's request, staff finds that it's consistent with the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, and the residential design development policies. We believe it promotes infill development where infrastructure is already available, contributes to the housing diversity of the area and affordability, and in general furthers the public health, safety, welfare of the citizens of Glendale. Staff is therefore recommending approval of GPA 20-09 as written and approval of ZON 20-15, subject to the following stipulation. One, substantial conformance to the project narrative dated September 21st, 2020. Mr. Chairman, I forgot to introduce the applicant. This is Adam Baugh with Withy Morris PLC. They're representing the owners, Palmeir Investments LLC. With him this evening is also Ryan Hatch, the developer of the project next door, I believe is also involved in this project, and Hannah Blin. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Gailart. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Crowe.
Mr. Gailart, is this Section 8 housing?
I defer that to the applicant, I guess.
You can do it when you come up.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Commissioner Nowakowski.
All right. I see Phase 1, and I see Phase 2. Do you know if, when this is developed, if it's going to be developed at the same time? Is it the same developer? Is it one development? Because just judging by how the landscape design is, it seems like there's, there's, you know, Palmeir West and Palmeir East, so with one little driveway connecting, but just, just seems like if it's going to be one developer, that the design would have been different. Just curious.
My understanding is it's all the same owner, same developer.
All right. And so the expectation, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gailart, is that the development will be developed at the same time? Because if you travel on Palmeir between 45th and 43rd, you know, it's very different. There's, there's a sidewalk, then there's no sidewalk, and then there's a sidewalk. So my hope is that it'd be done at, at the same time. And then also, you know, that big vacant lot in Phase 1 is a cut-through from Palmeir to Glendale, so there's, there's a lot of things going on in that vacant lot, just.
Yeah.
So, just letting you know. And then, has there been any outreach to the Academy of Math and Sciences across the street? I know you're going to have a driveway into Phase 1 right across from the, that Charter School. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Nyberg on my far right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. It looks like the property to the east is zoned R4. Was there any consideration to R4 for this request, just for continuity purposes?
My understanding is that they wanted to do three-story units along the, at least the south portion of the site on the Phase 2 property. And the, you have to get up to an R5 in our code before you can go three stories. We have an R1, R2, R3, R4, R5. R1 is single-family. The 2, 3, and 4 are all multifamily, but you can't go higher than two stories.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gailart. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to come forward and make a presentation? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Certainly. Adam Baugh, Withy Morris, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. Thank you for your time. I almost feel a little silly that this one case is what brings you out, but it means a lot, and I appreciate you willing to show up on a night like this where development still tries to move forward in the midst of a pandemic. So thank you for that. I appreciate staff's participation in helping us get to this point. This is a case that's long in the making, and I'm grateful for the questions that you've asked, because I think I'll be able to address them all during the scope of my presentation. Okay. I, I will be brief, because I think George has done a good job summarizing it, but there's a couple of things I'd love to just sort of highlight real quick. Oh, this is your presentation. Do you have my presentation?
Maybe time for his Davy beating.
I think what's interesting, and this is a good story for Glendale, as the city has matured over the years, it's been strategic in the way it's laid out, but on occasion there are infill parcels. And infill parcels like this need help being developed. And I think part of the challenges that you have here with the one on the first phase is the odd configuration and the multiple parcels there. And as the, as Ridgway, my client, started to move forward and develop this plan, initially it was developing solely as a single phase, the Phase 2 really wasn't part of the equation at the time. In order to develop this type of product, to answer your first question, no, this isn't Section 8 at all. Actually, this is intended to be more of a attainable workforce housing. And in this economy, people seem to be building either really high-end luxury or subsidized housing. And the opportunities for subsidized are few, and the market for this area doesn't support a high end. But what we think we can build here is a Class B-plus development that is market rate, but in a way that's more attainable for workforce housing. But in order to make that happen, they had to go forward and come design around some odd configurations. And this particular property, being that it's an infill site, not only does it have some weird geometry, but it doesn't have the full complement of the roadway improvements along Palmeir. And so they'll be putting that infrastructure. But as they're going forward with the development, the opportunity to acquire the outdoor storage RV lot became available. So that's why they were already sufficiently down the road with the first plans. So that's why it might feel like it's a bit of two different plans. But what they've tried to do is actually create open space amenities that complement each other, so the one side you'll see the pool areas, and the other side you'll see the park areas. So that way the two plans work together in that degree and in that way. And it will be developed under one singular phase with one common owner, so you won't have to worry about that happening. But when I look at this site, I, it's important to highlight that to make infill successful, you sort of have to look at the bigger picture, and that bigger picture includes not just the vacant land, but the property we're rezoning today. And I don't believe it's in the best long-term interest of the city to have outdoor RV lots in this area. We think that it's a great opportunity, being that there's residential apartments to north, and our residential apartment, being close to a school, it's a great opportunity for pedestrian connectivity for students to walk back and forth. So there's R3 to the north, as I mentioned, R4. And the only reason why we're requesting R5 isn't because of the density, it's just because of the height. And that height is only on the southern building. So most of our property's two stories, but that's southern building. This helps you kind of get a bit of an idea. And originally, we actually had some more height and intensity on the Phase 1, but as we went through the planning process, that had to be scaled down a little bit. And so the zoning case gave us the chance to put a three-story building on our southern side. We like the walkability of this area, but we know it doesn't happen without developers participating and stepping up into that. So our obligation, I think as Commissioner Nowakowski pointed out, is to fill in what is otherwise, I think, a clumsy streetscape network today. You're correct. Your sidewalks go in and out. Sometimes there are no sidewalks. And if you want to provide true pedestrian connectivity, it needs to be completed along the length of Palmeir. Along our southern, along 45th Avenue, our most southern entrance, that's an exit only. It's not an entrance. And so that reduces significantly the number of cars that will come in and out. Now it's just one way out only. The, the property is intended to be accessed primarily from Palmeir Avenue. And that way, it comes in as the main entrance point, and then it splits and it serves both projects. I've already kind of covered a little bit of that, so I'll skip over to our architecture and design, the two-story buildings at the top, the three-stories buildings at the bottom. And there will be consistency in design between Phase 1 and Phase 2. So by the time this is built, you'll never really see or observe that it ever was two different phases. The idea is to build them in a singular, consistent fashion. But when I look forward, bringing this case to you, one of the things that's important to us, and I think to your planning staff, is how does this conform with your general plan? And in this case, there's three main goals that I think is important here. The housing element, the community revitalization, and the pedestrian connectivity. So your general plan has a goal to provide and build safe, well-built, and attractive housing, and we believe we can accomplish this in a manner that actually serves Glendale residents who live and work in this area. And we hope that this becomes a catalyst for some of the other properties in the area to begin revitalizing as well. The second thing here is that the city does encourage infill development, recognizing that sometimes it takes somebody willing to bite a bit of an hairy apple, so to speak, because sometimes infill sites have some challenges that have to be overcome. And we believe we've been able to satisfy that, and with staff's help, work through some of the difficulties that this site's been plagued with. And the last thing I point out with regard to your general plan is a goal that you should have comprehensive and continuous pedestrian facilities, so residents can walk safely and avoid being within the right-of-way or on the streets or crossing dirt lots or hazardous areas. And so through this process, we've been able to provide housing that's needed in an attractive way, market rate for workforce, but also in a manner that brings infill here and completes some of that pedestrian network. So at the end of the day, I think this meets a lot of those goals and policies of your general plan. I think that's one reason why it's been highly recommended, but more importantly, it's consistent with the pattern of apartments in this area. And for that reason, staff recommends approval. We haven't had any opposition from anybody involved, and frankly, with their participation, it's been a very straightforward process. And I'm grateful for the chance to present to you today, and I'd be happy to close and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
There was one opposed to it. It was Dennis Gerard. He sent the mail out.
Yeah, I failed to mention, we did get a phone call from someone yesterday. I asked him to submit a, an email regarding his concerns. The name is Dennis Gerard. I do not have a location on him, whether he's living nearby or not.
My apologies. It's the first I've heard of any opposition on this.
Didn't want him to get upset because he didn't get...
Thank you, yes, for the correction.
I didn't see any questions here, but he's opposed to the project and has a number of reasons stated. Again, I don't see a residential address connected to this, but I assume he's in the neighborhood there. The Chair has a question. On the 45th Avenue exit only, that shows that as a gated exit only, and I'm assuming that's going to be a left-hand turn only south to Glendale Avenue? Is that correct, or is that going to go both directions there?
You could go, be a left out or a right out, either one. The reason why it's gated is to discourage any people to come in, but the sole reason why that's there is because of public safety. You need to have a secondary access point, so that serves both as our emergency access as well as our egress only.
Okay. So it will be the emergency, but it will be an active egress exit point?
Yes.
Okay.
My presumption is if somebody wanted to go south, they would exit there. If they wanted to go north, they probably would just exit off of Palmeir, most likely.
Yeah, it's a long trip up on 45th to get to, get up to Orangewood. I wanted to thank you also. You mentioned the general plan, and I want to thank you for your consideration there. There's something I think I can speak on behalf of this Commission that we place a great value in adhering to the general plan, and I appreciate your attention to that.
Thank you very much.
It sometimes gets overlooked. Sometimes the most conspicuous things get overlooked. So thank you for your attention to that detail. So any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your presentation. The Chair will now open the public hearing, and we'll do a public hearing on GPA 20-09 and ZON 2015. Can we do those contiguous, Mr. Gruber? Do we need two separate public hearings?
Chair members of the Commission, I think you can hear those at the same time.
Okay. And then we're going to have two separate motions, Commissioners, when it's time to vote. So now, the Chair will now open the public hearing on GPA 20-09 and ZON 20-15. The Chair has zero speaker cards this evening. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak on this item? Anyone here this evening like to speak on this item? The Chair sees and hears none. The Chair now closes the public hearing on GPA 20-09 and ZON 20-15. We'll have a motion prior to discussion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve GPA 20-09 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of GPA 20-09 as written. Is there a discussion? Well, you know, I can understand an objection from a possible neighbor here that they don't like to see the, the density and so forth, but I'm very familiar with this rather awkward piece of property. As Commissioner Nowakowski pointed out, there's a lot of disoriented connections and sidewalks and no sidewalk and vacant lot, and it just appears to me that this is a nice use for this space so close to Glendale Avenue. With that, I will conduct a roll call vote, beginning on my far right. Commissioner Nyberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lennox.
Aye.
Commissioner Harper.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilfong.
Aye.
Commissioner Nowakowski. Very good. The motion is passed. Mr. Gruber, what are the next steps in this process?
Chair members of the Commission, your action with respect to case number GPA 20-09 is not final. Your recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we need to do a motion on the zoning, ZON 20-15. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve ZON 20-15.
And would that include the one stipulation?
Including the one stipulation, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is the second, for the record? Commissioner Crowe. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ZON 20-15 with the one recommended staff stipulation. The Chair will now conduct a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Then we'll proceed with the vote. Commissioner Nyberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lennox.
Aye.
Commissioner Harper.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilfong.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilfong.
Aye.
Commissioner Nowakowski.
Aye.
The motion has passed unanimously. What are the next steps in the process, Mr. Gruber?
Chair members of the commission, your action with respect to case number ZON 20-15 is also not final, but will be recommended, excuse me, forwarded to the City Council for further consideration.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing items this evening. We appreciate the applicant and applicant's representatives presenting the case and coming in this evening. Congratulations. Mr. Metta, is there other business this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing more to add.
Is there a planning staff report for this evening? Okay. Commissioner, comments or suggestions, commissioners?
I have a comment I'd like to make.
Vice Chair Lennox.
This is my last night as vice chair, or even on the Planning Commission, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, we went through a lot of planning directors, interim directors, and Lisa was one of the best ones we had, and I don't know what happened or why she left, but she would have been a good one for the spot. We learned a lot of things, and one thing that I've been taking out of this, I don't know whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, is that it seems like no matter what the Planning Commission, if it's a unanimous vote, or what the constituents say, the City Council does what they want to do, and they're going to do it anyway. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lennox. And I believe seven years? Yeah, seven years. And prior to that, several other extended tours of duty with various boards of commissions within the city. And not only the commission here, but the city as a whole owes you a tremendous debt of gratitude for your really tenacious service to the community, and, you know, thank you. And as chair, I want to thank you as vice chair. You were a great timekeeper, you were always there, you were willing to take, make motions at times that other people might not, and you kept things rolling. So thank you very much for that. Any other comments, commissioners? Okay, well, I-
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me? Yes, sir, Mr. Nyberg.
I just, I just wanted to say that we have a couple of our fellow commissioners departing after this meeting, and I'm going to miss you both. I've appreciated your, your guidance and your words of wisdom in my, I'm the rookie in the group, so I guess that's about to change, but I wish you both well, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ed, that's very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Crowe.
I would like to echo the same comments. I'm not exactly a rookie, I'm on my second term, so I'm out of the rookie status. I graduated. But I know that the counsel that I've gotten from both of you, the input, and I really appreciate the discussions that we've had. I appreciate you being on this commission, and you will be thoroughly missed. Thank you for your service.
That depends on who you talk to, Commissioner Crowe.
Well-
Thank you.
Okay, I speak for myself then.
Thank you, thank you, Vern, really appreciate it. Also, my, my last meeting, I, I would like to clear out a couple of things that were circulating, I had been asked by community members and contacted. I was not forced out of the chairmanship by anybody. I wasn't asked to leave, I wasn't induced by anything other than my own desire to, I'm a big believer in term limits. And I believe that applies at every level of government, even volunteer service in government. And I've had a great run on the Planning Commission. I am very grateful to Mayor Wires, who originally appointed me. I waited over 30 years for a position on the Planning Commission. I served on a number of other boards, so when I got here, it really meant a lot to me. Again, I just felt like we have really, I could not have asked for nicer individuals to serve with, and I just, I'm so fond of all of you, you've just been absolutely terrific, as have previous members. It's just been a wonderful experience. But I think there comes a time when, you know, you step down and you let other capable people step up and, and carry on. So, you know, that's why I'm departing, there's no other reason to it. I would like to, I do have some regrets. And one of them is that the city has been in a bit of a convulsion as far as the Planning Department. There were extensive plans to rewrite the zoning and ordinances and so forth. During my term of chairman, Mr. Metta, this evening will be my sixth, either acting director, director, temporary director, or administrator that I've served with. And some have been better than others, but they all have treated me with great dignity and respect. I had an opportunity to get to know two of them in particular much better, they had a longer tour of duty. But something is fundamentally wrong, I mean, I just can't help but feel that, that kind of trauma within a department, it just, you know, I just have to go up the food chain and wonder what, what is amiss? And I hope that some stability will come, that a permanent individual, you know, no person, no competent, capable, professional person is going to stick around and not be treated right. And I have my own conjecture about what has gone on. I don't know, I'm not there, but obviously, something is not quite right. And I hope whatever that is can be settled once and for all. Second, I have felt that we need training as commissioners. And I tried to do what I could to implement a training program, and we had some limited success with that. We had preliminary plat education, we had traffic study education, and we had several other things slated. I fondly hope that there'll be an opportunity to see that effort through, that new commissioners can be brought through, they can be mentored, they be trained. You know, we don't pretend to be experts on all the topics that are brought before us, and it would be helpful to each and every commissioner, whether you're an old-timer or someone new, to have, to have that education and brought forward. So I hope that that will continue. A personal issue with me is electronic billboards. I'm opposed to them, I hope they will go away, and I hope that a future Planning Commission and future city councils will prayerfully consider limiting and restricting these electronic billboards in every way they can. And lastly, I was once told by a former Planning Commission chairman, who ended up on the City Council, that the Planning Commission is nothing more than a rubber stamp for City Council. Well, I thought he misunderstood the role of both being a councilman and a member of the Planning Commission, because by no stretch of the imagination do I think that being a rubber stamp for City Council is a proper role. Coincidentally, he ended up getting himself recalled during his first term, so maybe I'm not too far out of step with my disagreement with his idea there. But yes, we've had disagreements with the electeds, we've had disagreements with staff, we've had disagreements with each other. It's been done in good faith, with charity, and I hope in goodwill, and, and hopefully with a little good humor. Certainly hoping that we never rubbed anybody too much the wrong way, but Planning Commission is ideally suited to make these kind of decisions, and although the electeds at City Council certainly have the authority to override what the Planning Commission does, you know, we're not elected, we're not salaried, we don't have a constituency other than the city at large, we don't have any special interests, we don't have to raise campaign funds, we don't have to run for office, we don't have to do any of those things itself, examine the facts and vote our conscience. And I really think that's what this commission has done during my time on board, and I'm real proud of our work. So with that, I want to say thank you, one and all, for the opportunity, and I will stand down, feeling pretty good about this, I'll miss you all. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. And I beg your pardon, yes, the incoming chairman, I'm very happy to say, Vern Crowe, and Vice Chair Ed Nyberg, they're next up, and I know staff will give them all the good support that I had, very appreciative of that. So, okay, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Support. Are you sure? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Forty minutes.